Second, and we'll start with old business. And I entertain a motion for minutes of the August 26, 2020 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Dr. Melnick, you're here to give us a COVID-19 update. Take the floor, please. Thank you.
News, sir. The metric that we'll be looking at, the number of the cases per 100,000 over the last 14 days, seems to be dropping. So we had plateaued at a moderate to high level. But the last, the last time I checked in, we were at 71.6 for 100,000. That's most recently where we're down to 63.05 for 100,000 in the last 14 days. So we're hovering into the high level or just at the borderline moderate to high. But now we're, we're well into the moderate level. So, and we're looking at, if we look at the daily counts, or you know, when they'd been up in the, in the, you know, 40s and 50s, we're down to the low 20s now. So still higher than we want to be, but I'm gratified that the numbers are coming down. And the hospital capacity remains in the green zone. So that's looking good as well. We don't have the percent positive test yet because the state is still working on fixing their, their, their data piece and we rely on that. But hopefully we'll have that pretty soon. But it's looking, the, 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 the metrics of, you know, the case rate seems to be going down. I didn't used to dread holidays, but you know, I'm concerned over Labor Day, especially with the weather being as warm as it is. I, you know, we had a bump in cases after Memorial Day and then after July 4th. I'm hoping that people use, you know, physical distancing and, and, and continue to wear face masks so we don't get a bump after Labor Day. And the other reason I'm hoping we don't get a bump after Labor Day is if we maintain these in moderate level and we continue to maintain that after, you know, a few weeks after Labor Day, that will be incentive for the schools to begin bringing in the K through five kids. So I'm cautiously optimistic and hopeful that people are paying attention over the Labor Day holiday. So that, I just want to be fairly brief. That's what I have for you.
Thank you. Are there questions of the council or comments? Okay, I just wanted to mention, Dr. Melnick, about the resolution that we passed yesterday, thanking our public health workers and those frontline health workers during this COVID crisis. So just you can, your, your, your people know.
Thank you. I, I am Council Chair O'Brien. I, I actually sent out, so excited about that. Sent out an, I actually sent out an email to our staff, letting them know about the meeting yesterday. So hopefully some of them were tuning in. But I also sent them an email out last, last evening about the resolution. And it's really very meaningful to them. So I really appreciate the support we have from our council, for our staff and from the Board of Health. I really appreciate it. And our staff really appreciate it.
We, we appreciate them, obviously. So thank you. Okay, we will move on. Thanks again for the report and we'll move on to item number three under old business, which is a 72nd Avenue storm pipe repair.
Councilor O'Brien?
Yes.
This is Kathleen. There's actually a couple items under the COVID. The second one, there's a brief update from Michael Torres.
Oh, all right. I'm sorry. Yeah, actually, you sent that to me and it's.
Yeah, and there's, and then Lindsay also has the letter that has been circulating amongst the counselors.
Oh, right.
So Michael Torres is here on behalf of DCS.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, councilors. This is Michael Torres of Clark County Community Services. And I'm here on behalf of Vanessa Gaston. She asked me to give you the COVID-19 update specifically regarding the eviction prevention rental assistance program. And council requiring, please, you do not have to feel bad about forgetting about me. I was actually doing a happy dance before Kathy and Otto reminded you that I was still here. So the eviction prevention rental assistance program is $4,930,000 from the State Department of Commerce coming to Clark County that need to be spent by December 31st. The purpose is to help prevent evictions in Clark County for low income households that do, that are not able to pay their rents due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have four rental providers in the community providing rental assistance with these funds. Those are Council for the Homeless, SHARE, Impact Northwest, and Lifeline Connections. There are 10 additional organizations that we are calling by four organizations. And those are organizations that are run by Black, Indigenous, or people of color. Four to serve communities that are Black, Indigenous, or people of color. And the purpose of these organizations are to provide outreach and referral to those communities that are historically harder to reach. And we know this from looking at our previous data when it comes to rental assistance and housing and stuff like that. We want to improve the outreach in those communities. So we've contracted with 10 different organizations, working with different communities to help us do outreach and referral. For individuals that need rental assistance, the basic criteria is they need to be making 50% of or less of the area of medium income. And they need to be owing rent to their landlord. And they can call to get assistance 360-695-9677. Or they can call 360-952-8317. An extension 387 for English, 386 for Spanish. So the program started on Monday, August 24th. So just like last week. The data I'm about to give you is as of late Friday, the 28th, so five days into it. The system, like the program had already received 830 calls for assistance. Approximately $235,000 in rental assistance had been provided. And overall, 36% of the people receiving rental assistance have identified as racially non-white. 63% of those receiving rental assistance have identified as white. And additionally, 25% have ethnically identified as Hispanic or Latinx. We are also working with our providers to track, you know, wait times. So what, you know, I can tell you that the phone wait times have generally been kept to within 30 minutes. You know, someone, you know, dialing or, you know, just the amount of time they have to be on the phone before they can get assistance. A person will always answer, so this is not going to phone messages or machines or anything like that. The maximum wait time we have seen has been about one hour. The amount of time of actual phone conversation is, you know, for screening has been about five minutes. So the next update that we are going to have with our service providers to see how this, you know, this is continuing to unfold will be on September 9th. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Are there questions of Michael?
Madam Chair, I just asked if Michael's gentleman, when we start talking about Lindsay's letter, because there are a couple of comments that are, that are related to the programs he just described. And so I'm hoping he will stay on. Thanks for that update, Michael. Great work.
We'll stay on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Michael. Appreciate the report. So the next thing is the letter. Lindsay.
Good morning, council. So in follow-up to our discussion last week during council time, there was interest from the council in sending another letter to the governor's office and to the governor related to the CARES Act funding and requesting the additional appropriation on the pro rata basis. Of course jurisdictions under 500,000 receive their appropriations from the state and those over 500,000 receive theirs directly from the federal government. And had we received our pro rata share, we would have received significantly more than we did. So this letter is in follow-up to a letter that we sent back in June. So I will say though, this letter was drafted before, I obviously started circulating this over the weekend. And this was sent before the information that we received in the last 24 hours regarding an additional appropriation that will be coming from the state. It's looking like about $9.7 million will be coming additional to, to Clark County. And the deadline will be extended from October 31st to November 30th for use of the CARES Act funds. So I will say, if the council wants to proceed forward, I would recommend adding some language. And I'm happy to do that, to add some language mentioning this and saying that, you know, we, we still would anticipate receiving, you know, this is 9.7 and we're grateful for the additional appropriation. It's funds that we desperately need and will put to good use. But it's also woefully short of the amount that we would have received had we been a population over 500,000. So I also would want to get council input. I would recommend including in the letter how we plan on using the 9.7 and the holes and challenges in the funding that still would remain. So again, I would recommend making some language tweaks to the letter, but I wanted to check in with you and see if you still want to move forward given the information that we've received in the last 24 hours.
Thank you, Lindsay. Are there questions and/or comments from the council? I do believe we should add the verbiage about the 9.7 million. And then if we are, if we're going to indicate where these money should be spent, I would take that input as well.
And Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So Lindsay, what, are there restrictions on the 9.7? I mean, are they fencing specific uses for that additional money?
At this point, I'm not seeing any additional restrictions above and beyond. Of course, the restrictions that are in place with all of the CARES Act funding, but no additional sideboards on the funds. But we're just still getting in the information this morning, so stay tuned. But at this point, no.
So my general comments then, Madam Chair, are that, one, we need to get the letter out as soon as we can. Yes, we should add, and the 9.7 into the existing column as to where we expect to, to spend it. I was hoping, you know, we, in the letter as it exists now, we have about 11.5 million into other. I would rather reduce that column and move that money that we project to spend in support of schools, like connectivity issues, whatever we can reasonably attribute to CARES Act impacts, rent stabilization, care for the homeless. I would like to add a little bit, just a little bit more money into each of those columns out of that miscellaneous. You know, we, and focus on our homeless populations, our poor populations from mental health, medical care, tracing, testing. I know that's kind of subsumed in, in the health department money that we expect to place in there. But small businesses, of course, we need more money put into that column. So I'd like to generally reduce that 11.5 million from miscellaneous and put it into other categories and bolster the amounts that we intend to expend because we easily can do so in each of those areas. Those are my general comments about the letter. But I, I think we really need to get it out. 6, 9.7 million is a step in the right direction, but it's a, it's a baby step.
Other comments of the council and suggestions about, about these funds and where they ought to go?
Yes, I have.
Councilman Lance?
Thought. Um, I, I agree that we should reframe the letter to, you know, thank for the, for the 9.7, but it's still not enough. I would support that. On the, where things can go, I echo Counselor Medveji on wanting to see funding both for the future, if we do get more funding, and also from the 9.7 and maybe in this other category to more specifically articulate support for housing relief and homeless supports. I think we have a really difficult situation coming down the pike, which is going to start before the end of the calendar year. I'm very happy about the, the money that came from the state for rent relief. And I'm grateful to see that in action and moving forward. It's also probably going to be in the end, a drop in the bucket of what's needed. So preparing for that, especially as we know that our winter hospitality overflow is limited this year, that we aren't actually going to have as many beds as we need. And that is supposed to start November 1st. So if there is more we can do, knowing that we are going to have more people on the street, I think that that would be good for us to look forward to that. So with regard to the letter, I'd like to see things reallocated a little bit or broken out a little bit more specifically. And I'd like to see our list actually name, rather than include housing and homelessness. I think it's included under other to actually name it and break it out. And perhaps also for the list just below that graph to say, here's, here's examples of what we would spend it on, to actually also have one of the bullets be specifically for these needs. Thank you.
Other comments of the council?
Yeah, if I might. Yeah. I do think that, you know, if we're looking at the 9.7 million and the question about how we allocate that, those funds, that we try to come to some pretty specific direction on that. And, and I'd like to kind of hear, I don't know, maybe Counselor Lance, you may have some more information than I do in terms of actual numbers with regard to rent relief, additional rent relief that might be coming soon. But we have some restaurants and small businesses that are teetering on the verge of literally just collapsing and going away. So if we look at these three categories and we add, or somewhere in there, we add, you know, homelessness and rent relief and, and those types of topics, I would also like us to see fairly large amount of this money going into economic stability in the community and, and school support. So instead of looking at, you know, how do we spend 50 million in these four categories? We're now looking at how we spend 9.7. So, so there's additional challenge there. But I would, I would support adding the housing and homelessness question to, or issue to the bottom in terms of specifics. But I'd sure like to see a large portion of this new money going to some economic stability measures here in Clark County. So I'd like to see some more numbers, maybe specifically with regard to what public health expenses we might need to look at and what those numbers look like for housing and homelessness services.
Thank you. Other comments? As I listen to what the other councilors have said, I agree that we should actually enumerate the homeless and the housing issue as well, rather than just putting it in other. Because, because we are doing it and it's, it's something that's necessary to, to show what we are doing and what we need to do in the future. I would also agree with Counselor Olson about stabilizing somewhat our small businesses. But with regard to this rent relief and if we're going to receive any more, I'm wondering, are the landlords who own, because I know there are many people who own just maybe one or two units or something, and they have mortgages to pay as well. And I'm wondering, is, is there a program that is aiding those individuals as well? Michael, do you have an answer to that?
Well, so the eviction prevention rental assistance program, the money doesn't actually go to the renters. It goes to the landlord. The landlord has to certify what is being owed to them. The landlord is not, also not promising, just so you know, not to evict them when the moratoriums are all over. You know, it doesn't, you know, they're not incurring greater responsibility or risk by certifying that this rent is owed.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. So, so as, as was previously stated about enumerating those issues, the homeless and, and the rental assistance, I think should be enumerated as well. And, and, and agree, I agree as well that more funds from even the 9.7, if at all possible, should go to the economic stability of our small business owners, whether it's restaurants or whatever it is. Because I know that these small business owners are hurting. And so what, whatever we can do to keep them open and alive would be good.
Chair O'Brien, this is Kathleen. Just for clarity, you want this added to the table? Because I do see in the letter that Lindsay did, right below the table, actually bolted out 10 million for school districts, 20 million to support the small business, including local restaurants. I don't see the rental assistance or homeless support listed there. But do you want that incorporated in the dollar amount up top? Because those were the specifics, I think that was supporting what was in the table.
I, I would prefer that it's in the table if possible, but I don't know what the other councilors were looking to. Counselor Lance, is that what you were looking for or was the breakout below the chart?
A little bit of both. I would say in the, in the table, if we could specifically break out any homelessness support, any rent relief that we may be using from our CARES funds that were received. I know that what Michael reported on earlier was a separate pool. But to have that chart actually specifically layout, like, you know, we know that we're spending the money on the Motel 6, so laying that out in a, in a specific line in that table. But then below where we say, and maybe also then adding it into the, to the right-hand column, but below where we say, here's what we would do if we received the full funding we believe we, we are owed, to also have that broken out of, we would use more. If we got more, we would spend more on this item as well and add that as a bullet.
Okay, is that, does the council agree that that would be a way to handle it in this letter?
Madam Chair, so what I heard from everyone was essentially the same thing, just maybe emphasize different words. And I mean, originally, when we first started, and I'll use the word swag, swagging the amounts, I mean, I had thrown out 30 million for economic supports from the original 600,000 that we had. We, so my only comment is, yes, I agree. We need to put a little bit more specificity in those areas that we're kind of just putting a broad brush to right now. And, and then the other general comment is reducing that 11.5 million and having a much smaller miscellaneous amount. And put all that money that we should be getting, the additional 66 million, into those other categories that we've all mentioned.
And until we get some clarification also from the state regarding what funding we will receive and what it could be used for, I think part of the other column was a contingency for unknowns with public health response as well. There might be other funding available for that coming forward, but we don't have that for certain. But this letter is certainly not binding and does not require you to move forward with this. And it can be adjusted as we move forward.
Okay. Lindsay, do you understand now what, what is necessary for this letter or do you have questions?
No, I can go ahead and take a look and get a new draft out, circulate. We see as we find out information about potential, additional public health. May tweak some things. So the rub queen, how fast we get the letter out versus how much we wait to get some of that additional information. But I can make some changes and circulate that amongst the council. I'll get a draft out by this afternoon.
Okay, thank you very much. Then I, I think that covers what we were going to cover in this section of the COVID update. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the third item under old business, 72nd Avenue Storm Pipe Repair.
Hi, this is Tom Grange. Can you hear me? So we have a PowerPoint presentation and if that's something Rebecca can pull up or if I should share a screen. So the northeast 72nd Avenue is a major corridor, as you are aware, north-south. A lot of people use it. It's fairly high speed. And so it was discovered, as you can see in this photo at the bottom, looks like a pothole. At the time it was discovered, it was probably a foot or so deep. And it was a result of a pipe 12 feet below the surface that had failed or damaged. And so then the soil and the back fill material placed on top of the pipe was able to go through the crack in the pipe and be washed away, creating a void and, and a subsequent small sinkhole. This picture shows after it was filled in with some gravel and it had settled a little since that. So on July 29th, the council declared it an emergency. Through that, we were able to get help from the city of Vancouver. Originally, we got some help from Clark Regional Wastewater District, who has a camera that goes down in pipes, a video camera. They did some initial work for us, didn't have time to do a thorough investigation. About a week later, we were able to schedule the city of Vancouver and investigate it up and down the pipe and found that this wasn't an isolated location of failure, that there were more locations. And found that there was about 600 feet, that there were enough, there was enough damage along the way that they would need to be completely replaced, that stretch of pipe, 650 feet. And then beyond that, there were a couple of locations that were severely damaged, but they were more isolated locations where we could do spot repairs. This photo, maybe go back one photo. These are photos just kind of, I don't know how interesting they are to you. The first picture there shows kind of what a normal pipe would look like inside. So this is 24 inches in diameter. It's got a little water in the bottom. It's called high-density polyethylene pipe, so a black plastic pipe. It's been installed here in Clark County, probably the preferred pipe by contractors and developers in the county as well, for probably over 30 years. And good success with it. It's a good pipe as long as it's properly installed. So that's what it should look like. The next slide kind of shows what happens if it isn't properly installed. In this, you can kind of get a feel that it's kind of collapsed or squished down. And I think the next slide, you can see there, up in the left-hand corner is where the, the pipe, and this is tough stuff, is cracked. And then you can see the right where it's cracked and then kind of a stalactite thing forming, I believe is what, what you can see there as moisture begins to move soil and things through the pipe and, and drip through. So that's the situation as we discovered. And so the concern, obviously, and this is what, that last slide there shows that the top, it's split at the top and it completely came down. And so that's what we found below that small sinkhole. And so we've got other locations like this and it's just difficult to predict. It's, you've got 12 feet of soil between the surface and the pipe. What's there, whether we have it or not? But in looking at it, we looked at a few different alternatives. There are things where you, technology where you can send something through the pipe. They call it pipe bursting. Clark Regional Wastewater District. Uh Clark Regional Wastewater District uses that oftentimes to enlarge and repair pipes. So we spoke with them and we spoke with contractors, they used use and given the situation here and the fact that we know we've got very poor backfill on top of the pipe. Uh they didn't feel like that would be a recommended uh procedure. And so we've got a bad pipe and we've got bad backfill on top of it. And so really the only viable solution that will last is to dig it up, put in a good pipe and properly backfill it. And so by proper backfill, it's not putting back, in this case, the soil that's there already, which is you know, clay, sloppy peat soil, but it would be putting back some imported gravel material. And that's what the pipe needs to be properly supported and should live forever as a plastic pipe. So we kind of went through a s- and accelerated process like we would on a nor- normally. Uh we need to accelerate it because we have about a month and after that uh it's a roll of the dice whether we'd ever be able to fix this pipe this year. And so what we did was um similar to what we did on Pacific Highway. Even though this hasn't gotten to the point that Pacific Highway was where you couldn't let traffic through, we can still allow traffic. But the potential for it this winter to continue to go and fall apart and for us not to be able to repair it is a real problem. This isn't a repair you can do once the rain starts and the pipe fills up with and the ground becomes saturated and and soggy. So we did similar to Pacific Highway. We uh made a list of consult of contractors that we've worked with in the past that bid on our projects uh that know how to do this type of work and contacted them, asked them for their availability, asked them how they would approach it and asked them to give us kind of an estimate of first. And so we evaluated those that came in. Two of them subsequently said they really couldn't fit it in on our schedule, they're finishing up work. Obviously, this is a busy time for contractors and we were aware of that. And so uh we were concerned that we would find someone able to do the work. Luckily, McDonald's Excavating was one of the companies that we contacted and they just had a pipe crew that was coming off a job. And so they have an availability here for the next, basically the next month. So that was very fortunate. Their price came in identical to what our engineers estimated the price should be. And we will proceed with the contract. If you authorize it on a time and materials basis, which is what we did on Pacific Highway as well and had good success, where we pay their actual cost for materials, for pipe, for rock, those kinds of things. And then we pay their wages for their their staff and this is all according to prevailing wages. Um we will put accord those and pay them as it comes in and equipment costs will be based on an industry standard, which is called the Blue Book. And this is the same approach we would take. We use this approach on projects when unforeseen uh circumstances come up and so there's work needed to be done, which wasn't part of the bid. So that's that's the approach we would like to take on it. We're very concerned about letting this go through the winter. Just because if we let it go, it pretty much has to wait till almost this time next year before it's dry enough to successfully repair this. Uh in addition to the contract, we're asking uh a resolution to close the road. As you know, it's a very high-speed road. This is along the shoulder. When the pipe was originally installed, they had a little problem with the trench caving. And so if we have any issues with that, it's very risky for motorists as well as makes it challenging for our contractor. And with the road closed, they'll be able to uh move much more quickly and we they said they're able to, their preference is to work ten-hour days, so their normal schedule would be four tens. They're willing to work five tens and we would pay you know, probably about fifteen hundred dollars a day premium to have overtime have them work an overtime day, which isn't much given the fact that we could reopen the road that more quickly. Uh in the presentation, we we didn't include, but we have a detour route already established, which is one mile to the east is Fiftieth Avenue. And so worst case for someone.
Tom, if I may, uh the detour route is actually shown on page seventy-five of the th- this is Rob Klug, I'm sorry to interrupt, uh it's shown on page seventy-five of the way almost at the end um of the staff report and contract.
And so with the uh signed detour, worst case for someone is they, if they lived right at the south end and they wanted to go eat muffins with the person at the very north end, they would, three miles out of the way to get to their friend's house. For most people that are traveling and kind of get from Vancouver from jobs out to home, they'll probably swing over and take one seventeenth or something else, but it just kind of depends on circumstances. Uh we anticipated being done in three weeks or less. And again, we will incentivize them to do that or basically in this case, be willing to pay the overtime cost because it's pretty small, given the benefit to the public. So that's the basic information. Are there any questions?
Are there questions of the council?
Madam Chair, if I could just ask one I was gonna ask about the detour, so I appreciate you popping that that up and then also the time and I heard three weeks. If we didn't pay the overtime of the fifteen hundred dollars a day, what does the three weeks look like?
So I think um so they work ten-hour shifts, which is typical for contractors, the most efficient for them. So if we pay, I'm guessing it's about calculated, it's probably about fifteen hundred dollars for ten hours more in a week, it just cuts, basically cuts a day off the length of the detour. So fifteen hundred dollars is the premium we would pay for uh shortening the detour by a day.
And three weeks of fifteen hundred dollar, I mean no, so that would be, no, it's only fifteen hundred for the entire time?
So we would probably look at maybe two days of overtime, so we might pay three thousand dollars and save two days. Or we might do one day and save fifteen hun- pay fifteen hundred dollars and save one day. Worst case is we might do three days or four days and spend uh forty-five hundred or six thousand dollars.
Okay, other questions? I too was gonna look, I I wanted to know about the detour, so I appreciate seeing that map as well. Must be done. So.
Well, so after that explanation, I am concerned about how the contract reads uh that we don't incentivize the requests for overtime. Vice keeping it to three weeks and uh under the working material. I you know, I I'm just a little cautious based on what he just explained. Uh I so do you understand my concern that I don't want to add one, two, three, four, five days of extra overtime? If they could have done it otherwise in the normal workday?
And I think what we would, our plan would be is, we haven't said at this point in time whether we would do that or not. Some of it just depends on how things are progressing. And if we're on a Thursday and it looks like we've got a week before we can put traffic back on the road, I would recommend that we pay fifteen hundred dollars. In that case, instead of saving one day, you might be saving three or four days because of the weekend in play. So we can, we can play it by ear and use good judgment. Our experience on Pacific Highway, and we hope it goes as well here, is the contractor really um you know, they're a local contractor, both of the one we used before and this one, and they take some pride in helping in a in a an emergency situation and so I I don't feel like they will milk it, try to use it uh to pad their pockets. Um these are respectable contractors and and we'll, we'll keep a close eye on things and if it is just saving one day, we can hold off on it and save the overtime more if it's close to a weekend or a time that it, we get multiple days benefits if overtime, if that's the council's preference.
Thank you. Good. Thank you. Other questions or comments of the council? This does need to be approved, so.
Do we need um two motions, one for the road closure and one for the contract approval?
I think so. But I would, I question, I I would think so.
Yes, um Public Works is asking for approval um to execute the contract with McDonald's Excavating and then the resolution for the road closure. I do have a resolution number for that as well, it's twenty twenty dash zero nine dash zero seven.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
Yeah, I would definitely approve the contract with McDonald's Construction.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the the contract with McDonald's uh excavation. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And Madam Chair, I'm going to uh pass the resolution twenty oh nine oh seven.
Okay, that the previous motion did pass. We have a motion now for um the road closure. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution twenty twenty oh nine oh seven. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Uh the motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Rob. Go do your work.
Um, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, going on uh then to new business, councillor report. Let's go on then to work session uh requests. Who is here to present that? Okay.
Good morning councillors, I believe you can hear me. Okay, with me is Jenna K from my staff. And what we are requesting is a work session, councillors uh for about an hour, uh which is yet to be scheduled sometime in October. That will be uh likely a remote uh work session relating to uh staff work on the shoreline master program. As the council is aware, uh we have, Clark County have been undertaking a periodic review of our shoreline support program as is required by uh the Washington State Shoreline Management Act. We have um or Jenna ha- have and Brent have worked on this for uh the last few months and I've done extensive work in terms of outreach. Um and we are at a point where we have to come to council. We had a work session with uh the Planning Commission and also a hearing on August twentieth and the Planning Commission voted five-zero to uh to move the project forward to council hearing. So we would like a work session with council. Uh there are few issues that uh will help us as we have the work session with the council. So this is a request, we are here to answer any questions that you may have and Jenna, who's been working on this is as well here to answer questions if you have any. At least at the work session uh we will likely hear more question from the council. There are some policy issues that hopefully the council following the work session will address, will direct staff on how to proceed on those. So it's technically a request of a work session.
Uh any questions of the council or clarification? So um I would say that we could, I I'm in favor of this uh work session. Anybody else not in favor of it?
Madam Chair, if I may, I am uh in favor of it and I've spoken up before um on this issue. I really want to see the nexus on the fringe areas to the shoreline management. You know, the all the clean water impacts, uh anything that would touch on the shoreline areas that may negatively impact it or improve uh on those areas. I I'm looking for how all those uh laws and entities relate and what what the respective jurisdictions are and you and you know, it's uh focused primarily on the the Lacamas uh lake and its watershed and the shoreline areas there, uh but it would apply anywhere in the county. So I'm hoping uh to have those, that further discussion during the work session.
Very good. Uh it looks like we we do have, uh I saw other heads nodding about the work session, so I would say yes, we can go ahead with this one-hour work session sometime in October. Thank you, Oliver.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh moving on then to Lindsay, do you have any report on policy issues?
Nothing further from me today, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. Uh we we are going to adjourn this meeting and go to executive session. Uh we're going to have executive session regarding RCW thirty-two, thirty-one, ten, one C for fifteen minutes. One pending litigation for ten minutes and collective collective bargaining for fifteen minutes. That totals to about forty minutes with no action after. So uh we will leave this meeting and go on to the executive uh session. And I will be back in about three minutes. See you.